Okay. Microphones are hot and we have five. Mr. Tucker is, can't make it because of business. And Mr. Conell is at a funeral. And we, we hope and wish him well. We'll catch him up later on. We have this on our work session. And I'm asking Mr. Carpenter to help us out here. And what's our next work session? Just so we all know where we are in time.
On May 11th, we have the council meeting.
May 11th is our next work session. Okay. And will you, seeing us here from department heads? Is that what you're asking?
Yes, sir. Yes, we'll be here from department.
Yeah, okay. Okay. And as an administrative note, I, all of you should know, I've talked with the city of Camden and talked to them about the CDC moving off of this restriction and other restrictions. And we'll see what the city of Camden does next week when they review their emergency ordinance. And then we'll comply. And then we'll look to Mr. Carpenter to walk us down that path. Like I said, coming down the tree is harder, or is at least as hard going up. All right, Mr. Carpenter, you own the stage.
So I can speak into the microphone? But what we're going to start to talk about today is the county's status in debt. This is an issue and a topic that a lot of people have had interest in through the months and the years. And so we're going to start off with just a review of the existing county debt. First is our sewer debt. As you see in the page in front of you or on the screen as well, Kershaw County currently has several outstanding issues of debt for its sewer department. The sewer millage that is on tax notices pays for the bonds that were issued in 2008 and 2016. Then also, we have a revenue bond for sewer, which comes from the generated revenues of the department itself. The total outstanding debt of sewer is $5,921,000. If you, you see the reasons for that debt.
Help us understand what we have here. We have down the left side are each of the bonds that were issued.
Correct.
You got a rev- okay. The first one is sewer millage for.
That paid for the wastewater treatment plant. And it also paid for the lab building and the chlorine contact chamber.
Yeah, so you go over to the right and it tells you what it, what it buys.
Yes, sir.
And then debt services.
That comes out of general obligation debt. That was part of the county's GO bond in 2008. Part of that included sewer, East Camden Sewer Line.
East Camden? Part of it or all?
Part of that debt. There, uh, that overall bond went to a variety of issues. That was just one of the projects.
I'm with Mr. Brazel. If you made the print smaller, you wouldn't even be able to read it at all.
It's pretty small. I'm just going to look up here.
If, if I may.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Mr. Carpenter, sewer debt, this outstanding debt for utilities is, are we talking about the special fund, the sewer millage? Bond debt for that, for the treatment plant upgrade? And also the 600,000 on sewer building? Is that part of this as well?
Yes, sir.
As well as the Camden Sewer Line?
Yes, sir. East Camden, yes, sir.
And as well as the pump station in the main force?
Yes, sir.
All that is.
All that, same thing, yes, sir.
So that's coming, now is that projected out to? I know we got 2021, we're in this year. But is that projected out to 28, 29?
I don't have that in, in this slide, no, sir.
Okay, so.
Right, this is just where we are right now.
Okay. Perfect, that's what I need to know. So what I've got, this much I got is the projection.
Yes, sir.
It's useful to, yeah, to your point, Jimmy. You look at pay off full value, that, that fourth line. Is that what you're talking about, Jimmy?
Well, I've actually got a projection. That projection's out to 30, 31. I just want to make sure where we were.
Oh, I see.
So to pay off the debt today.
Would essentially be 5.9 million dollars. Yes, sir.
That 5.9 is to pay off now?
Yes, sir. That's the remaining balance on the sewer debt. Again, we pay for it through three different sources of revenue. One of which is the millage that is on the tax notices. One of which is through general obligation debt. And then the third is through revenue that the sewer department self-generates from customer fees. Summary of. So we currently have on the tax notices 2.6 mils.
Excuse me. Mary, did Sammy want to listen in? Okay, well, he probably could listen in right now if he wanted to, right? Okay, good. All right, good. All right, thank you.
So as you see, our current on the tax notices, we have 2.6 mils. Those 2.6 mils for what are used to pay for, again, those first two bonds, the 2008 and the 2016 bonds that are being used for wastewater treatment upgrades and the chlorine contact chamber and the lab building. Each mill's value is $205,000. And we estimate that this year we'll collect $533,000 towards sewer debt.
Estimated. And that collection would be like December of this year? December and January, a year from now?
No, sir. No, sir. That's, that's what we estimate we will collect this current fiscal year. So by the end of June.
By the end of January.
Yes, sir. So that's the basics of where we are with our sewer debt, right?
And the value of the mill is low because.
It does not include Camden.
Does not include the city of Camden and those people that are in the French.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
So our sewer system is costing us a year to run and operate.
For debt? I only have, I can get you the, but for debt, we're spending about $530,000 a year this year.
For debt?
Yes, sir.
And then for operations, we use, of course, we're using the $2 million from taxes that we get from, um, Sackville Water Utilities.
Well, only part of that goes to sewer. The rest of that goes to the school district. So, so, I mean, their budget is, I did not bring the general budget with them, but I get that for you.
No, that's okay.
All right, so are there any questions on where we are with our sewer debt?
Do we collect from the East Camden? You know, you made notion of the East Camden. Do we collect from East Camden?
We collect from revenue from any customers that are tied into the system.
Revenue, but not millage.
Right. And any millage that is well. If they're in the sewer district, then they pay the millage.
And that's like 14 houses?
Yeah, it's very few customers out there.
Okay, 14 houses. Okay, thank you.
That's because the city got their line out there before we did. Is that correct?
Sorry, the city doesn't what?
I'm sorry, the city of Camden has a line out there as well, so.
Yes, sir.
The great majority of customers out there are actually on a city, on a city line instead of ours.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yes, that's correct.
We, not as well. They, they're the only one, I think.
Oh, as well, in addition to our line.
We don't have a line there, do we?
In East Camden, yes, sir.
Yeah.
Oh, but the, the city of Camden operates it for.
That's right. The county owns and operates the line, but we use their treatment plants.
Okay, that's not, yeah, that's, I think we're saying the same thing. I got you.
Right.
Thank you.
They also have a line that serves customers and, and the new subdivisions being built, things like that. The city's serving on their line that's out there as well.
But the sewer, the sewer district is.
Everything that's not in the city of Camden.
Everything that's not in the city limits of Camden.
Correct. Absolutely think it, absolutely think it can be a goal of ours. And I think that is feasible. Well, we would, we would have to go about by one of really two ways. Either paying off the existing debt and issuing new debt that's paid for with revenues, or just paying off the debt in full and not having new debt. So if we, if we paid off the debt and reissued new debt that didn't require millage, but instead you say sewer revenues to make the payments, then that's one way to eliminate that. Or the second way is just to pay the debt off in full and not have many payments. The sewer does not have enough cash on hand to pay off the remaining debt at this point. They could pay off some of it, but they don't have enough to pay it all off. We could raise fees. On the users, on the customers. So if we increase the revenue of the customers, then we would be able to eliminate what we're paying on millage and just issue bonds paid for that way. Or save up enough money from the increase so we could pay it off in full. We charge, what we charge is based on the usage per, of, of the number of gallons. So it changes by person. Others charge a flat fee. I think in, in Columbia, they charge a flat fee per month. We just charge based on usage. So there's a base fee and then, then per thousand gallons usage as well on individuals. So it'll be different for every person. Yes, sir. That's one of the things we will talk about in the budget is doing a rate study for the sewer department.
Okay.
And that would consider all those issues.
The customers include not just houses, but businesses, commercial and then industry. And that impacts as well. Yeah, okay.
One thing I'd like to say is, of course, I appreciate you asking those questions because, you know, 15 years ago, actually before any of y'all were on council, the county council at that time created a sewer tax district. Of course, they tried to change the name to Economic District, this, that. But basically, all the unincorporated areas in Kershaw County would be paying a sewer tax. And they've been paying that. And some of those areas, and I think you're well aware of this, will never ever say sewer. So I appreciate your interest in this. And I hope we can move forward to figure out how this could be resolved. And of course, I'll have some, some ideas tonight that may go in that direction as well, that will go in that direction, actually. Thank you.
Okay. Then moving on. Our general obligation debt. Currently, Kershaw County has three bonds that are outstanding. Bond issued in 2008, one issued 2014, and one issued in 2015. The 2015 bond was broken into two separate parts. One was taxable, one was non-taxable, hence the A and B. But it was one bond issuance. See, we have a remaining total of $23 million on those three bonds. And the interest rates range from 1.9% up to 4% on the bonds themselves.
And that in itself is a topic. Are you going to talk about the favorability of the market here eventually?
Yes, sir.
Okay, but a 1% bond is better for us than a 4%. That's the obvious solution there, right?
Yes, sir. Currently, the bond market is lower than, than most of those rates would show.
Which makes this discussion very fruitful today.
Yes, sir.
To how do we get best value for less cost for our citizens? Okay, great.
So currently, we have 10.6 mils on the books. The value of a mill for debt is roughly $250,000. We estimate that we'll collect this year just shy of $2.5 million. And we currently have on hand still remaining unspent from 2015, $11,200,000.
And that's the one we opened for EDO?
Yes, sir.
That's the EDO bond. Mill assessed, that's against what population in the county?
Against the entire population of the county.
Include Camden.
Yes, sir. That's the general faith and credit of the entire county. It's the term that they use to describe that.
And that's mill assessed. The chart should read for general bonds?
Yes, sir.
No, for just, okay.
Right. For general obligation bonds for debt.
Okay.
Those bonds were issued for economic development?
Yes, sir. Well, not all of them. I mean, there are three bond issues. Again, if we go back.
There are three bonds.
The 2008 bond was a broad base bond that covered several different projects in it. Among them was that sewer project we just talked about, East Camden, as well as various equipment and upgrades to county facilities. The 2014 bond was the bond we issued for CCTC, for the jail and for Parks and Recreation. And then the 2015 bond was the economic development.
The, the cash that's left on hand, is that from the 2015 bond that was issued for economic development?
Yes, sir. That's fully from, from the 2015 bond.
We're, we're about to look at options for bond restructuring and debt relief?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yep. And we think we have some good news to talk about tonight.
So here we sit with the current status of, that's the outstanding debt the county has, all of our debt. And that's the money that we currently have in the bank. With apologies to Mr. Brazel on the size of the next chart.
Oh, this is, this is unreadable.
We can't read that.
Oh, thank you, Danny.
Can this be printed out in some other way?
Danny to the rescue.
And it's, it's not just me that can't read it. Nobody can read that.
I brought mine, too.
I can read it, just for the record. You got a microscope? I haven't had 40 yet. Some of my eyes haven't changed.
Basically, where we are today, this is the way the bonds are structured with the payment. As you look at the, as you look at the chart, and to the left, of course, it says the number of years. Then the next column is the amount of the annual payments. It's broken down with the next one that would. Tell you the interest rates, I believe. No, no. And then going into that is the amount of mils that we have on the books to, to make those payments. So we're currently at 10.6 mils. If we do nothing and change nothing, then we will continue at that rate and then start slowly dropping in about three years as bonds start getting paid off until we bottom out finally in about 2040, somewhere in that range. So that's the current where we are. That's changing nothing. That's if we keep doing for the next 20-plus years what we're currently doing. With the bonds, yes, sir.
And also, if we were to play out the 2015 bond, it could be almost $30 million in payback.
Absolutely. If we paid it in full.
That's why it's essential. And, and I for one have always harped on trying to free up or pay off these bonds. I'm glad to see we're having this meeting on this today.
Your, the next page is unfortunately, I, my fingers are fat and they're, they, I put the summary in by mistake. So that's at the end of it. So we'll go back to the summary later. So here's the status quo, what I was just showing you up on the, on that little chart. Basically, our millage would drop slowly, as I said, up until 2046, whereupon we paid off in full. So again, this is if we do nothing. Then starting in 2025, we would lose about seven tenths of a mil. Then '26, we'd lose another four tenths of a mil, and on down. So what can we do? Well, when we issued the, um, bonds as a rule, when they're issued, they don't allow you to prepay them without a penalty. The bonds are sold to, to give a guarantee of certainty to the bond buyer of a, of a cash flow. And so they, they build their business plans around the cash flow guarantee. So to pay off a bond early generally is not a good thing. So they put a penalty in. And so our 2008 and 2010 bonds have a prepayment penalty that's included in it. When we did the 2015 bonds, however, we did include the ability to pay those bonds off without a penalty. So we had to go five years before the penalty would be removed. So that would be called defeasement. So when we issued the 2015 bonds, they had the ability to be defeased in, right now, basically, starting in this fiscal year, we could defuse them without a penalty. So of the 11.2 million that we have remaining from the general bonds issued in 2015, we could use that money to, to buy back bonds, to, to pay them down and suffer no penalty by doing so. If we did so, then that'll give council a lot of options to consider as far as what you do going forward.
Or a reduction in millage.
Yes, sir. Clearly, that's one of the options.
Not if we re-spend it.
So what are your options? Well, if you.
Well, let's back up for a second.
Okay.
We didn't, most of that, I think all of that is economic development.
Correct.
And we got to that point. Yeah, thank you. I'm just being lazy. We got to that point because we decided to go slow. And secondly, we found some innovative ways. I can't use that word. Innovative ways to find what we were doing. And so, and now we're about to see success. And that's coincidentally or not, after four hard years of work, we can also look at how we do our economic development going forward. The go-slow approach included such things as build a spec building and wait to it to be sold before we bought another one. Okay, that's one of those things. And we'll talk about that in the executive session tonight. But that's one. But that's one. And so the original plan was, I think, for three spec buildings. And we decided to go slow based on market conditions, and that turned out to be, so far, a good idea. So that's how we got where we are, and we've got money that we can roll back into the county, as Jimmy said, in some way, and all of you may have ideas. All right. And I hope we can hear from you today on that. Go ahead, Vic.
So what can you do? Well, first thing you can do is you can refinance your remaining debt at a lower interest rate. As the chairman indicated, the bond markets now are a little different than they were when some of these bonds were issued. Though obviously, there's never a guarantee until you actually sell it, there would be a good chance that the remaining bonds could be reissued as a single bond at a lower interest payment that would save the county money in that aspect of it. You could also issue new debt that would allow Kershaw County to do just some of the following: build a fire station, build EMS station, a public works complex, or recreation projects, or other related to debt. You could use a portion of that millage to provide the safety net for EMS if hospital Philo is no longer available to balance the EMS budget. And as Mr. Jones said, you could do nothing with it.
Reduce the millage?
Yes, sir. That's doing nothing.
Okay. I understand, but that's not doing nothing, that's actually doing something for the taxpayers.
Yes, sir.
On that end.
Absolutely. Yes, sir.
Yeah. To that question, these monies cannot be used for recurring expenses or non-recurring?
You could, but you'd be governed by Act.
Either way.
Right. Act 388 would always apply in using it, so therefore, you couldn't use this money for fire any more than they're already allowed to raise the fire millage under 388. EMS would be different if that hospital Philo occurred, because that would trigger Act 388 clause that would allow you to use that much millage, a general fund. You'd be governed by 388, but you could use portions of it if you wished.
Could you take a little rabbit trail? Explain the, what, how the missing Philo would trigger Act 388 to allow us to increase millage?
The hospital Philo is roughly one-third, one-quarter to one-third of the overall revenue for EMS. Under Act 388, if a single paying entity ceases to pay in a fiscal year and it is at least 10% of the revenue stream, then you are immune from Act 388 limitations in order to replace that revenue stream.
On a one-time issue?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. So if you had an industry shut down and stopped paying, then, for example, you know, 10, however many years ago, if DuPont had just shut down one day and 388 had been in effect, then the county could have issued enough millage to overcome the loss of that. The same thing would be for EMS. If the hospital is, ceases to pay the Philo because it's such a large percentage of their budget, then you would be able to replace it with millage in excess of 388.
So if, then this is, I apologize, maybe this is a conversation you're not going to have privately, but I'm already talking, so let me finish my, thinking aloud, based on what Russell and I have talked about, if, say, for example, fire and EMS was one department, and this Philo goes away, and it triggers, it triggers this exception for Act 388, could then we reset the millage, like you just said, and use it for fire if fire and EMS were one department? The other idea would be, so how do we, how do we get a big payer that's paying for fire, not to quit paying, so we can have this trigger happen on the fire side?
Right. I don't have the immediate answer for it.
Right.
Because we'd be merging two special districts into one. And so.
Right.
The legalities of that, I'm not.
Okay.
But if you can do that, then I don't know why that wouldn't apply. So because it would still be more than 10% of the combined budget.
Right.
The combined budget is, would still be under $10 million for fire and EMS, so that would still, so if you could do it, and that's the big if, I don't know that.
A lot of ifs.
But it, I don't know why it wouldn't be able to do then.
Just thank Russell. Well, I think combining EMS and fire, as far as where they're housed, would potentially save us money. I would have to have a hearty study at any kind of millage change. I'm not trying to push.
Yeah.
Anyway, that was just, when you said that, I was not aware of that, and I was like, huh, wait a minute, hold on, that gives me, that's more food for thought for me to ponder.
Now, that's absolutely.
I felt like I had pondered all that I could ponder on fire, but that's nothing.
That's, that's not something which I, yeah, let's look into that.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Not to get off the subject, but I had some thoughts on fire, and, but I think that's a different conversation.
Well, when we're done with debt, we can go into that, because it's kind of a wrap-up session, too, so.
Yeah, okay.
Are we talking about the, all of our bond re-structure, all of our bond, or just 11.2?
All of them.
All of them.
Yes.
Okay. Well, we have 11.2 now. If we restructured that, then we could do fire station, EMS, public works, recreation, and allow for a safety net for EMS, and a reduction of millage all at one time, could we not?
Certainly.
I mean, that's not, that's not going to cost $11 million to do those.
Right.
Four or five things.
Certainly, in theory, yeah. I mean, it would depend on how much of a bond you would issue.
Right.
For those, if you issued a small enough bond, then you would have enough remaining millage that you could cover your EMS needs and still have some left over to reduce the overall millage.
So we could have the best of all the worlds everybody's looking at, essentially, depending on where we wanted to be with it.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
You're talking about some one-time expenses, and then you're talking about some annual expenses. I don't know that we would use funds from a bond for an annual expense.
No. What I was understanding, Mr. Gardner, say, was if you free up a certain number of mills, part of those mills you would use to issue a bond, the remaining mills could be put into the general fund and used for operational, or into the EMS fund or whatever, and used for operations. Because they're, they're all issued for the same people. So debt and EMS and general fund, all citizens pay that, so it's fungible. It can move back and forth. It's not like fire, which is limited to who pays it.
We would be relieving ourselves of debt that would free up cash flow, that would help fund.
Yes, sir.
Daily operations.
Yes, sir.
So how could we take that? And we're talking about funding the 24-hour fire. I will get off on this tangent, if I'm allowed. So if we could fund 24-hour fire in our rural districts out of the general fund, and we issued a rebate or deduction or whatever to everybody who's like in Lugol Fire, Camden, and then I think you referred to it as the Camden Fringe District. If they got a rebate, so they weren't getting taxed twice, why couldn't we just use general fund money to fund those firemen and not issue an additional fee, as Mr. Jones has pointed out multiple times?
And I've asked that question of the attorneys, and they are drafting for me a white paper on it, but the short answer was that we couldn't do that. And then I've asked them to explain why we couldn't do that, and they're working on that for me. So I'll have to defer to them on that reason, why we couldn't issue a rebate to people. It's not the issue of, it's just the issue of can you, can you charge something and then rebate something to some people?
Well, we're already doing it. We're already doing it tax, the Act 388. We're doing it now for school bonds.
But we're not issuing a rebate. That's, what the penny sales tax is, is that's part of, the constitution allows you to do something like issue a penny that is used to offset what you're paying in taxes somewhere else. So they're able to use that clause in the constitution. The county did it in '91 when we issued the local option sales tax, which then goes to decrease the tax that people pay already. But there's not a similar provision that would allow you to just take funds out of the general fund and reimburse some people, but not others. And I don't want to get beyond my legal knowledge of talking, so I'd still would kind of ask that the attorneys be able to explain why we can't.
Would the South Carolina Supreme Court be able to rule on something like that? Because what frustrates me is the fact that we've got money in the general fund. We, we use it for all sorts of good things in the community, but we're lacking funding in essential service such as fire, and that's just backwards. I mean, at some point, we are the folks that are making these policies, and we are the folks that have to, if we had to go to the State House, we had to do what we had to do. But we've got to be able to fund essential goods and services ahead of other things.
Yeah, and I would say this, Mr. Brazel, in fact, I think this is to steal one of Mr. Jones's quotes, it's only an opinion, you know, so the, so the council could do that. And if no one challenged it, then, and if they do challenge, and it would get into a court situation, like you're saying, of which a determination would be made.
Well, that's where it's, I mean, that's the only place I see it going, because if we just rely on attorney's opinion, that's all it is, is an opinion.
Well, let's take a look at it, but it brings along with it some danger, which is the suit would cause us then to repay not just that one person suing, but everybody. So let's, when do we, when can we see the paper?
I'll ask attorneys, see if they can have it for us certainly this week.
Yeah, let's look at it.
Vic.
Yes, sir.
I'm really interested in something that Mr. Gardner said, it kind of caught my ear as well, and I think this is a good conversation from everybody, actually. When he was talking about the restructuring, having the essential needs we need, and also the reduction in a millage, you said, in theory, is there any way you could put what he was talking about down on paper for us to look at, see if it could be an action, something that we could actually do?
And if we go a few more pages, I've worked out a couple of options based on some of the questions, which I was anticipating.
Good.
So it might answer your question if we can go a little further down.
Because when you talk about being able to provide the services and reduce the millage as well, I mean, that's worth looking at.
Yes, sir. Absolutely.
Okay.
Okay. So.
Oh, by the way, there was a discussion about penalty and not penalty. The earlier bonds, like 2008 and so on, so how much, do we know how much that's going to be, or are we rough guess?
Well, what we would do is we would essentially not pay the bond off. What you do is you would essentially go ahead and take the money necessary to make all the payments and deposit it with a fiduciary agent who would make those payments for you. And then you remove that from your annual cash flow requirements. So, you know, if we had eight more payments of $100,000 a year, we would set aside $800,000 into a separate account that a fiduciary agent would then make those payments on our behalf. We would be done. We would essentially pay it off that way versus writing a check to you, the bondholder. I'd write the check to David, the agent, who would then send you eight checks for $100,000 every year until it's paid off. It's a workaround that allows us to have the same effect.
Peace. Now, but then we could come in with a lower interest rate.
Yes, sir.
I just want everybody here to know what a great job our attorneys and Vic did in negotiating the 2015 bond with a low interest rate and no penalty. So I just want to congratulate you on bringing us to this point where we are on sound pudding, and we are now able to even find a better stance, and now you're giving options to this body of legislators that makes it possible for us to even make it better. Good show. Okay, thanks.
So you've just been given, which is the next page.
Excuse me one minute.
I'm sorry. Which is the first option that I worked on. And basically, this is what if you just wanted to pay off debt as fast as you can? So what this essentially does is this max, I'm sorry. This is if you wanted to generate the maximum amount of millage that you could use for purposes you wanted to use it for. So you're going to maximize your millage reduction. If you do it this way, then you would end up freeing up 7.4 mills of debt that's currently being used for debt. So that's your first option. You just say, okay, we want to restructure bonds, pay off bonds, issue new bonds in such a fashion that we create the maximum amount of millage on the books that is not being used for debt. That would be 7.4 mills.
7.4. And that's for, just to understand, that's 7.4 that remains?
Yes. The council, right. So that could from, you know, you could use that for, again, paying for other services, paying for other bonds, you know, overing the millage for the taxpayers, whatever.
Okay, it frees up, it doesn't remain, it's 7.4 that doesn't go to the people.
Correct.
And that's out of a total of 10-something, right?
Yes, sir. Out of from 10.6. So you would use 3.2 mills for debt and have available 7.4 that's currently on the books.
That's, that's good news for the people.
Sure.
They get the same services and they get freed up from taxes. That's great. Okay. Does everybody understand what we're looking at here?
That doesn't build, that doesn't build an EMS station or a fire.
No, sir.
Okay.
No, sir.
So this.
But now you could use that 7.4 for whatever you wanted to, but.
What's the 7.4 mills equal in dollars per year?
1.4, about 1.7 million.
All right, so 1.7 million dollars that we would, that we would have them freed up that we could spend on essential goods and services.
Yes, sir.
So at that point, we could use that money to fund 24-hour fire, or we could use that money to help EMS, or we could use that money to help the Sheriff's Department.
Within the confines of 388? Yes, sir.
Okay.
And then the $11 million we had unspent in the bonds, what happened to that?
That's, that's gone. You paid off debt.
Okay.
With that.
Everybody got it?
So that's no longer in the, in the account.
So the money that we've got sitting in a savings account is gone, it's, we've paid off bonds, we freed up cash flow that we can use to increase our services to the people of Kershaw County without creating a tax increase.
Correct.
You know, Russell, guys, I really like where we're going, the conversation we're having. This is what I've been saying since 2015. Everything we're talking about here today is what I have said since 2015 and even beyond. We had some of the earlier bonds, and I just think it's very worthwhile, you know, looking at.
Well, I'll say to you, sir, some of, some of our conversations and some of the conversations that Vic and I have had, and Chairman Burns and I have had, have led to this, and I thank you for that, and I thank all of you for that.
Pay as you go.
Okay.
Have you heard that before? Pay as you go.
Looking at this, I'm not any wiser. And it's small numbers, but the summary is very useful. Again, there's a penalty, but you've, you've gone around that, and there would be some renegotiation in here. Can you talk about that? Which of these bonds would be renegotiated?
Well, basically, what, what this would do is, is it would. When they talk about, if you look in the last line of the top, where it says the remaining amounts are refinanced via bank placement. So that would be essentially the remaining, after we paid off the debt, and we would pay off the debt that is most advantageous to us. So in other words, you pay off your higher interest debt, and then you structure the remainder so that you could, could have a, as you see, it's pretty consistent for the majority of that debt for almost 20 years of the same interest payment. So you basically are spreading out your remaining debt so that you have a level payment for them. So you would, you would restructure those bonds, so it doesn't necessarily cut the amount of time that you're paying on it, it just cuts how much you're paying on it over those years. So you restructure that in a way so that you generate upfront that maximum hit of freed-up millage.
So column six, and seven, and eight, and nine, and I guess 11 are what remains?
Yes, sir.
In terms of bonds? Having said that, I'm not sure that makes me any wiser, but it does show the schedule of payoff.
Basically, what it would do is it would pay off the 2014 bond right away.
Yep.
And then it would restructure your 2015 A and B by getting rid of the 2015 B and.
Which is?
That 2015 B, I believe, is the tax-free. Yeah, that's a tax-free, the 2015 B. So we'd get rid of that one, and then you would have, the remainder would be the 2008 and 2015 A that you would then restructure to give us that maximum impact on.
2018, which is the.
Which is the taxable. Yeah, I'm sorry, economic.
Economic development, yes.
Yes, sir. Yeah. Yeah.
Okay. And then I see the notation, paid off with 4 million and, and of unspent bonds, I got that. Anybody else have questions? I just need you to understand the chart. You got it? Okay.
One thing, I hope I'm not getting off the subject, but just to kind of give you a heads up too, we're talking about revenue, revenue that we've got coming in, you know, the COVID relief, you have that money awesomely coming in, 12.6, and then I hope tonight, with whatever announcement we have, I hope that you'll be able to give us a projected revenue stream of fee and lieu from that, from that as well. I mean, I, I don't know what we're going to be hearing tonight, but I'm sure something, I hope, very good where economic development is concerned, and that would be a part of it.
I'm with you.
So then moving on to option number two.
Okay, here comes the...
And that is if you want to pay off debt as fast as you can.
Thank you.
So, so that was what I mistakenly mentioned first, so.
Quickly as possible.
So paying off debt as fast as possible, essentially, that would have us restructuring, first of all, paying off with the, with the remainder, 11.2 million, and then restructuring the remaining bonds so that we can pay them off as fast as we can. That would have us being done with all bond payments in 2028. So that's the scenario that gets us out of debt as fast as possible. Again, you notice that some of the payments keep going on, and they've later columns, again, that's where we have given the money to a fiduciary to make the payments for us when we're done. We walk away and they make the payments on those bonds.
Does this scenario free up any cash flows that allows us to provide better services?
No, sir. This, this, at one point, you'd asked about what do we have to do to get out of debt as fast as we can?
Right, this is it.
And that's your scenario, that gets us out of debt as fast as we can.
This is completely with no bonds at all.
Issuing no bonds, correct.
That purely gets us out of debt.
It gets us out of debt in seven years.
Anything for EMS.
Nothing.
Fire station, new public works.
It doesn't, it doesn't add any millage, doesn't take away any millage, it pays off debt as fast as we possibly can.
We lose nothing, but we just can't build more.
Can't do anything too, that's exactly right.
It's, it's, it's neutral in revenue, it's just in the standpoint of debt's gone much faster this way.
For the next seven years, we don't have anything to do anything with.
Of course, you know, that's true, but of course, you know, we could always revisit things if it wasn't working out as well.
We'd have to reissue a bond, which would cost us money.
Yes, sir.
We could always revisit, I mean, we always had that option.
Absolutely.
And, and, and it does, if you notice, it does in 2027, a significant portion falls off, so you would have freed up about eight mills in 2027, but that's, again, that's not the current issue, that's six years down the road.
Yeah, we, we kicked, we kicked the can down the road of helping the citizens with monies they're already paying.
But you know something, guys, businesses, a lot of times can't expand either because they don't have the money to do it. So the fact that we can't expand, but we're paying off debt, I think that's good business.
Well, the fact of the matter is, the county is expanding due to population growth. We've got, I think there were six or seven projects on the books in which there, we're going to have a, probably in the next two years, we're going to have significant growth in Lugolf, and if, if everything goes through, and we just, we want to make sure that we're able to obtain the services and the EMS services, provide EMS and fire for all those folks, and at the same time, don't go up on taxes, because what I don't want to do is get caught short three to four years from now and somebody push, push a big tax increase on us.
Here's, here's what I'll tell you, Russ, the way I look at it, is that you're exactly right, the county's growing, but also with the county growing, the flip side, you always hear the negative of, of housing, but the, the flip side of it is, is that the more housing you have, the more, the more valuable your mill, your mill increases, so you're still bringing in more money from that point, because I can tell you that there was a year that Lugolf Fire came to us and said, we don't need to ask for an increase this year because we've had so much growth in our area, the value of a mill went up, it just provided us with extra money. So, you know, there are all wa, kind of ways to look at it, but...
Sure, and I understand that point as well.
All right, can I understand the chart here on scenario two? On columns eight and nine, it shows payments still going off on well into 2040, just for the sake of understanding it, that's somebody else paying them, not us?
Correct.
Does everybody understand that?
Say that one more time, sir.
Look at column eight and nine, and you see payments go all the way to 2041. But what Vic is saying is he will take the money and give it to another agency that would, would assume that function. You want to explain that, Vic?
Yes, sir, basically, what, again, we would do is we would take the money necessary to pay off those, those bonds, which go far into the future, and we would deposit that money in the trustee's hands, who'd make those payments. They would then be responsible for paying the bond off, so the bondholder would, would be made whole in that fashion, and we would get it off our books as soon as possible.
We use the...
The idea was to get it off our books as soon as possible, and so we generate upfront enough money in the first couple of years to pay them the full amount versus stretching it out like the previous one did, where we'd make the payments ourself, but it would keep the millage on the books a lot longer.
So that's Tom's point.
Right, so we, right, so we don't have to raise millage, we, we would, we would collect enough in those first couple of years to make the full set of payments and then...
Yeah, so everything has a counterpoint. You, you have a value that says you're out of debt, but somebody else is using our money to take care of that, and we likewise are not being able to utilize that money for anything else.
That doesn't make a whole lot of sense to me.
Well, that's the way I think the bond market works. Vic, you want to defend that position?
Well, I mean, at the end of the day, we owe the money, one way or the other.
Right.
And so this is just structuring it so that we can get it off of our books as fast as possible.
I think Russell means, it makes sense to him, but it doesn't make sense while we would go that option.
Yeah.
Well, the only reason is so we can, can get it off our books in, in six years versus 20 years, so.
Yeah, I just, yeah.
Because otherwise, we're making those payments.
You're having to, you're having to pay a fiduciary agent to act as us.
But I want to make sure too.
I didn't say that that's a scenario that y'all are going to want to do.
And that's, that's all part of scenario two, that doesn't exist in scenario one.
Correct.
Victor, what I'm concerned in too, now, I don't want to see us do a pea and shell game or a bait and switch, or, I mean, we've got a lot, I'm not saying we are, I'm just throwing those things out there because they do exist. We, we're throwing, well, I'm throwing, I don't know how many has heard about this before today, but this is the first time that I've heard anything about this, and we're getting a lot of stuff thrown at us. Who helped you prepare all this?
Our financial advisor, First Tryon, that we've worked with for a number of years, so they're the ones who run all of this information for us.
What are their names again?
First Tryon, out of Charlotte.
Vic and I talked about this months ago and, and looked at this, and whenever I was, was first elected, I met with our accounting firm as well and reviewed these documents.
Well...
Yeah, the issue again is if, if the desire was to not be making bond payments in the shortest period possible without raising millage, so to pay off as much as we can as fast as we can. This is the scenario that allows us to do it in a, in the briefest period of time, but it, they have to do the workaround, as I said, so we're collecting money, again, we're, we're collecting more money in those first couple of years than scenario one requires, for example, which, which means that we're, we're over-collecting to pay those bonds so we can pay them off earlier. So, you know, it's like your mortgage, if you make double payments, you're going to pay it off quicker, we're, we're collecting more and paying more to do it, but the way the bonds are structured, this is the, the legal way we have to do it.
Correct, yeah.
I mean, I don't, again, I got, I dropped out of accounting and intermediate accounting, so it gets beyond my...
So far, I like to keep it simple. So far, I'm a fan of scenario one, I'm not a fan of scenario two. Is there a scenario three?
Um, yes, sir.
Door number three.
Door number three.
Maybe four and five.
And here's the summary, just what we just went over. So the next is just your summary of, of the debt, so you can kind of see in one page.
I can actually read this.
Of, of what millage is freed up and, and when it's freed up.
Thank you so much.
That kind of puts it graphically, so you can see the status quo, scenario one of giving you maximum upfront, or scenario two of paying off as fast as you can.
Well, this chart has scenario three on it, and we haven't heard that yet.
Well, I didn't put scenario three in there because it was, I can't remember what scenario three was, but it was, oh, oh, anyway.
It's on the back page somewhere.
No, well, that's a different scenario three, so.
All right.
So, so that page is...
That's scenario four, in four B.
That guy was really confused.
All right, that scenario three doesn't exist. Option three, which is the next one.
Okay, here we go.
Okay, so if you wanted to issue new debt as well as having excess, I ran two sets. One is if you were to issue $10 million of new debt, that would use 7.3 mills, and you'd still have 3.3 mills of excess capacity that you could use for whatever purpose you wish to, as refund.
To not, to not use or to use?
To not use or use. So you could use it to, for, for operating purposes within 388, or you could use it as...
Hang on a minute, we got a new piece of paper, and it says scenario 1A. Is that the one you're talking about, is option three?
Yes, it is.
Did everybody just?
Just fold over to scenario 1A, I, I tried to...
Yeah, and I know you've been running so many scenarios, this is scenario three that we just got. Okay, got it, or option three. Okay.
I think you gave me one.
It's a 1A, I think, Jimmy, is it 1A?
It says 1A, but it's, it's...
That's three. That is three?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, that's three.
Okay, because I've got one there.
Okay, I'm sorry to interrupt Vic, but we just got to track you, it's very difficult. Okay, go.
Well, I mean, that's, that's, is the gist of it, is I went with, with a maximum amount of bond you could issue and still have a significant excess millage available to you for whatever purposes council would wish to go with. Whereas, and then just to, to compare that, then the next option that I did is using a $6 million versus a $10 million new debt.
You have that one, Danny?
Oh, is there a 1B, 3, 1B?
No, 1A is, is number three.
Yeah, Danny's, yeah.
And I hope this is the four.
So option three and four, which are diff, which are scenarios 1A and...
This is 2A on this chart, hold on a minute, just stay with us.
Please ignore the 1A, 1B, 2-whatever.
This is option four.
Scenario 2A is option four.
The fourth sheet we got is option four.
Okay, so scratch that through.
Scratch through 2A and write 4 on the top of it.
Yep.
All right, which, let, let's, let's just back up and punt here for a minute. Which one is the simplest way to consolidate all of our debt into one bond and free up the most cash flow?
Option one.
All right, I don't need to look at anything else.
Okay.
You say option one, so that would be not 1A.
Correct, that would be the very first thing in the PowerPoint that I gave out, not the handouts, the PowerPoint.
I would be able to let you know tonight if I agree with that one or not, and I may have something extra to add to it.
So there are 25 different options you can still come up with, I just tried to pick four out of the various scenarios that we ran, which is why the options and the scenarios don't necessarily jive up with the numbers, but the four options that I did, one shows maximum millage yield, one shows maximum payoff of debt, and then one shows if you issued two bonds, one at 6 million and one at 10 million, and how much capacity you would still have. The bottom line is of the, three of the four options that I provided to you allow you to pay off debt and allow you to provide operating cash to the county through operations or through debt or with bonds, and still give money back to the citizens if you want. You've got the most flexibility, Mr. Brazel.
You said to give money back to the citizens.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Option one is gives you the most flexibility because it gives you the maximum amount of mills that you can then figure out how you want to portion out.
With a reduction.
It's up to y'all, yes, sir.
The potential of a reduction.
Yeah, but that would be one thing I would absolutely be in favor of.
What's that, Jimmy?
A reduction of millage.
Yeah.
You, you know, and, and to still be able to move forward or maintain where we are.
Yeah, well, that's a happy medium, we got to, we got to figure out how do we move forward and either keep taxes where they're at or reduce them. And, and I'm, I'm happy to be able to provide more services and better services to a growing community and keep taxes low and keep them where they're at, or if we have the potential to reduce taxes, I'm all for it as well. So I think that's a wonderful point of discussion that we all should have, and this is good information, and thank you very much for all the hard work and due diligence you've done to get us to this point.
Well, I...
I have a question.
Sorry, go ahead.
If I may, Vic, this is good information, I appreciate it, and it took so long to get this before us, because I've been harping on this for five years.
Well, we couldn't defees the bonds until this current year.
Well, I understand there was a, there was a penalty.
So December was the first time that we were able to, to defees the bonds, so that's was, was the biggest issue.
Well, the negotiation on the five years was a good thing, no question about that. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, sure.
So, is there an option? I, I thought, I thought I heard a possibility when Russell was talking earlier and we were talking about fire, so is there, are you saying there, there, is there a possibility waiting on a legal opinion on whether or not we can use some of this to finagle some fire financing, or was I just hearing things?
No, you weren't hearing things. That's certainly what we're going to look into. I, I'm, I mean, I'm, I'm going to make sure of it, because slapping more fees and add more fees when there's money available here, we've got to figure out how to tap into that resource.
Right, got to.
That's what the question is. What do you say, Vic?
No, absolutely, I mean, that's, you know, the only reason that I would give you caution is if the attorneys say that you can't.
Because if there's, I mean, you know, if there's a way, because our, I mean, you guys know this or not, I mean, you know this, but our, our, if we just, if we would just left everything the same, that's still a good day for Kershaw County citizens, because when compared to Richland, Lexington, and even Lee County, this is still a low tax.
Thank you so much, I agree with you on that comment.
There we go, this is still a low, a low tax burden county. So if, we just left everything the same, but we were able to restructure this and then use that to do our fire thing and do everything else, I mean, that's, man...
That's a win.
We, we just, we just hit a home run without having to do the whole fire fee and all, because that's, you know, that's, so I'm, I'm, I'd be interested, and I would even, I'd take it a chance, you know? Like Vic said, the only issue happens if someone's going to call our hand at it, and I don't think, I don't, you know, I don't, I don't think that, well, one, I would say, I would argue the interpretation would be that we could do it. Two, if you are going to argue that we can't do it, it's only going to come up if somebody, you know, and three, you know, you want to, Russell, you talk about the frustration and wanting to change it, when, we got to talk to, you know, it's our senator, it's our House representative, hey, this is, this is why we elected you, this is all screwed up, while counties cannot fund essential services, please, you know, please fix it for us, so. I'm interested to see where this goes.
Yeah, when the, when the money's there and we can't access it, and we're asked, I've been here for four months, and, and it's been constantly pushed in front of me, but we're going to have to raise taxes to fund this, I can't do it, I won't do it.
Or fees.
But we'll, same thing, but what I will do is I will work to find out how we can access the money we already have.
Right.
To, to fund these, and that's what we've got to do, that's how we've got to work this.
Yeah, because that's been my frustration as well, because I've been two and a half years, and I've, you know, I've got the same roadblocks and about, well, this restricted, blah, 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 but it sounds like because we're at a, we've kind of, we finally got our defeasement, you know, time, it sounds like we've got some more flexibility.
We've got some flexibility, I think we do, and I think we should utilize it.
Yeah, I would say that I thank those who helped us get that bond, because we're talking about the economic development bond, that it made us possible to have four agenda items tonight on economic development, that will give you some reason to smile, and secondly, because the way Mr. Carpenter structured it on penalties and low percentages, we can now roll this over back to the benefit of our county. So let me just stop right there and see what I'm hearing.
Can I comment on something you just said?
No, let me, no, let me just finish.
Because I, I do have a little bit of disagreement with what you just said, I just want to clear that up.
Well, fine, but what I'm trying to say here is what we need to do from this meeting is make sure he has given the guidance you're giving on a value system that says, let's reduce the burden on taxpayers and get the maximum benefit for taxpayers out of this[1758.99] and get the maximum benefit for taxpayers out of this opportunity because we are now at the five-year point, and that makes it possible. So if you think, Vic, that you have, the guidance is starting to come to you, it might be useful for you to to see if you have other questions on that, okay? So because we're going to ask this to now be rolled in some kind of budget presentation.
Well, Ms. Chairman, then one of the directions that I could go is if we were to go with initially with with the first option that freed up the maximum millage and then use that millage to fund fire and try to address possible EMS, I could prepare a budget that would reflect that.
Is that where you guys are headed with this discussion?
When you talk about funding EMS, what are you talking about funding? What are you trying to accomplish with EMS this year?
What I'm trying to accomplish, Mr. Jones, is my understanding that there is a real chance that the hospital will be privatized in nonprofit, and therefore they would lose a third of their revenue.
I got it. I get that. I understand that. I just want to make sure none of those additional requests.
Yes, sir. I'm just trying to to ensure that they don't lose ground.
Correct.
I'm, I'm trying to keep them from sliding backwards.
But still, though, there's, they're still looking down five years down the road. Those, those things are going to become a reality. You may not agree, may not agree with everything that's said, but they're going to become a reality. So I think he was just helping us prepare for that.
Yes, sir. Well, let me ask you this. What, what things are you talking about? So I'll make sure you and I are on the same page.
You know, new schedule, happen to, happen to more manpower, being able to be more attractive. New, new station. Have you been, station one and station two are both in disrepair. One's totally unusable. So I'm just saying, uh, there, there are things that are looking, looking at us that we're going to have to.
Because there are ways, I'm sorry, didn't mean to cut you off, but there are ways that EMS could change things now and and keep the same amount of staff they have, and they could go to a certain, like a 24 on, 24 on, 24 on, 20, uh.
Seventy-two.
Ninety-six, ninety-six off after 24, and they could probably maintain the same amount of people they have now and maintain the same budget. I think it's copying the Charlotte Fire System schedule. I think it's 24 on, 24 off, 24 on, 24, 24 on, 24 off, three. Then the fourth, I think, is 24, 96. That's what, like, Charlotte Fire does, and they could do that with three shifts here now and not have.
Well, you share that with Gerald.
Hey, whoa, 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 listen. It wouldn't have to, would not have to generate $400,000 increase to go to a 24, 72. So I mean.
Was it that much?
Yeah, it would have been that much.
It was that much? I thought, I thought the minimum was 100 and something.
No, I'm saying with what he said he wanted to do the other night, or that he was saying he needed to do, that'd be about $400,000.
Two, I think. It was three out.
But even more than the the schedule, I'm, I'm talking about infrastructure. I'm talking about capital. EMS is, I mean, we got two stations that are in desperate need.
And we have to also watch out, look out for our sheriff's department as well. We have to look out for the fire service as well.
Because I say one doesn't mean I diminish the other.
We have more needs. We, we have more needs than we do money, and that's why I'm.
Always will.
Always have. And we don't disagree with that, but bottom line is I like the direction we're going today.
But the other part of that is we got to look out for all of our employees because of retention and all those sort of things with a better, you know, I mean, you know, we've got EMS people going somewhere else, deputies going somewhere else. We've got it.
He's got a full staff. He's got a full staff.
I know, but we, we have had that problem.
His, his turnover rate is is below the national average. I've looked into it.
I'm just saying we've, we've got to look at that and make sure that we don't have that.
I mean, I'm just giving y'all some facts that I've looked at. His, his, his turnover rate is below the national average. I don't see the crisis right now.
Well, I don't see a crisis as much as I see looking down the road and making sure we are prepared. I think even the fire situation has has shown us that, um, we, we got into a situation where if we would have incrementally increased our, our millage, you know, 15, 20 years ago, we may not be here, and now we're at a point, so we always got to be looking down the road and making sure we are, we are suited and prepared to, you know, to, to take the next step, you know? So that's, that's all, I think that's all we're saying.
Good conversation, gentlemen. Thank you all.
Yeah, absolutely.
Well, thank you, Mr. Brazel, for recognizing that.
So Vic is, just back to the housekeeping role here. Vic's expressed how that might be done. Back to option one. Have we pretty much addressed your issues with that, Vic?
I believe so.
Yeah. Now, three and four have been dismissed, but I just, we didn't get a chance to talk about them.
And three and four just rolled bonds into it. If you were to issue, and I, I've picked two dollar amounts. It could be less, more. I just picked one as a maximum and one as an intermediary one for, for the dollar amount that would accomplish other priorities councils indicator goals.
Yeah, yeah. I'm just trying to get the distinction between three versus four. Is there, it's often useful just to compare the two.
Essentially, in three, you paid off 11 million and you reissued 10, basically, isn't it?
Yes, sir.
And in option four, you paid off 11 and reissued six.
Yeah.
Is the essential difference to me.
Correct. Is that right? Yes, sir.
Okay.
But it takes advantage of the lower interest rates, which is why we free up millage.
Exactly.
Despite it almost being the same.
I mean, but that's the.
Yes, sir.
And that's bold of the difference. But, yeah, all that will come with the, that comes with the territory that you do.
Spoken like a businessman. Well done. Thank you. And then unstated here, many of you have already had the question, and we still have the question. You don't have the answer, and that is, uh, the COVID money or whatever we're calling this federal money that's flowing down, we don't have a clue yet.
There's still no guidance issued on that. Again, the, the categories that they have indicated it can be used towards, fire is not enumerated as one.
Right.
Capital buildings are not enumerated as one.
How about sewer?
Sewer is one.
Bingo.
Sewer is one.
And EMS?
And based on what we can use that for, if we could use that for paying off existing debt, then that would open up some more doors for us.
I think we're brimming, to Jimmy's point earlier this year in several meetings, we're brimming, you know, literally, at capacity. And if we're going to entertain any more growth and if we're going to make sure that we can provide a level of service, the, the two things for sewer I'd like to see is it being self-sustaining and take the sewer fees and millage off the books, do the study. And if we do get that relief package, let's put it towards infrastructure. Let's, let's put it towards ultimately expanding that sewer system to its full capacity.
Yeah, well, and that gets to the issue is, again, the housekeeping function. We got a budget reading on the 11th of May, another one 14 days later, and another one in the following month, and we're done. And we don't know when we'll have some indication of the federal funds.
We could have a call meeting if we do.
And then, uh, and then we may have to reopen the budget.
Absolutely.
In the new fiscal year, which begins one July. Is that what you're saying?
Yes, sir. My, my, uh, my plan is to present to you a budget that I know is based on the reality that we live with every day. And then if something changes, then then we can address it.
We get gravy, we get gravy.
But rather than build you a budget that, that, that I don't know if the funding would be there the way I budget, then I don't think that'd be.
Yeah, I think, I think that, is anyone who wants to have a budget based on what we don't know.
Of course not.
Has anybody wants that?
I don't want to pin the federal government.
We'll have a discussion like this, Russell, on sewer and other things, uh, once we know more. I think that's for sure.
Well, one thing that I had, one thing that I had asked earlier was how much, or which, I think I'm the first person to bring the COVID funds before this county council and mention it and question about how much we were going to get. And that was just a few weeks ago, but I had asked, how much are we receiving in COVID funds? And can it be used for fire, EMS, sheriff, safety, et cetera? I think this is what you just said, 12.6 million, possibly. Public safety is not specifically mentioned, as you said. However, it appears that some of the funds may be used to replace revenue loss from last year. And if that is the case, as I think you said, then that could conceivably be used for fire and EMS and et cetera, correct?
Yes, sir, within the context of their revenue loss. So if, if fire didn't generate as much money as the budget.
So you agree with my comment?
Yes, yes, definitely. Part of that could be.
Because you gave me the answer.
Right. That's what I'm saying. Yeah, it could be used towards.
It just depends that they had a revenue loss or not. We got to prove that fire had a revenue loss.
Right, right. So I can't take the revenue loss in general fund and use that to, for fire, et cetera.
Let me remind those who were here during the 2015 hurricane, and that was three of us, and the rest of you experienced it. It was so slow getting federal money reimbursed. Do you remember the FEMA issues that you and I went through? Is that to be expected in this situation, or is that also another unknowable, unknowable?
You know, it, yeah, obviously it's unknowable dealing with the feds. But the way I think it will probably happen is they will give us the money upfront.
Okay.
Then they will interpret as they go on, which means that now we're in the situation that we have money in hand, but if we misspend it, we have to spend it, we have to pay it back. So they will give us, that, they will give us further clarifications as this thing rolls on. It's like, it's like with the CARES Act from last year, you know, they, there's still ambiguity over whether some things qualified for CARES money, FEMA money. So I would expect that we will have the money before we have a real firm sense of where we can spend it. So that, again, leads to a go-slow approach, so we don't spend it incorrectly. And once it's spent, it's spent, then we got to reimburse it from somewhere else.
Which, well, we, we can do the same way they do, and we'll reimburse you whenever we get around to it.
But, but that's why we practice having a, a healthy emergency reserve account because hurricane season is coming up, and we have to spend the money before they reimburse, correct? In most cases, which is why we've always had that practice of having.
You know, and Bethune has already asked us for help. And what we have done is referred, they're doing the water system, remember? So we've referred them to the federal agencies, I think Elgin likewise, and then the special purpose districts of, and Camden, too, and, and special purpose district in, um, in Lugol Fire is another important one. But I think we'll all learn together on this. I think the cross-talk in the county and also in the councils of government, both CM COG and Santee Lynch's COG has been very helpful. We'll see. Vic, what else you got, bud?
That was the main focus today was, is I didn't know how long we'd be talking, so I just wanted to focus on debt and let you know what the options are so your brains can start thinking.
Yeah, and, and if you can update Sammy and Ben, and I think, you know, it'd be helpful if this package was reconstructed based on the flow and given back to all of us at some point, you know? So we can all work off the same sheet of music, scenario three versus four and so on. Not being critical, just make sure we're all on the same sheet of music with, as you've briefed Sammy and Ben, who are not able to be here. And we're going to hear from you tonight, right, Jimmy, on some ideas?
Yes, you may hear some ideas from me tonight.
Yeah, good. That would be good.
Good common sense ideas. You know, I, I do want to say.
I think this has all been helpful, hasn't it?
No question about it. And I, you know, I'm going to, just as I think, Mr. Snodgrass asked me, why did I say something the other night when I was, when, when the department head was standing up? I had to research it afterwards. You know, I did my homework afterwards to find out.
I'm saying, tell him now.
Excuse me. Just relax, just relax. But anyway, when he was speaking, I just went and I did my homework afterwards and, and gathered this information. And same thing with this. As it stands now, without me doing my homework and really looking at this, I have to agree with Russell, number one, is the only one that I think I'd even come close to, to supporting at this point in time. But then again, too, I don't know enough about it. I'm going to look at it more this afternoon, so I'll have a better understanding. But I appreciate everybody's concern on this. Thank you.
Okay. Other questions? Hey, that was great. We see you at 17:30 tonight. We got some good news. We got young men and women coming in also that we're going to recognize from the Boys and Girls Club. So that ought to be a great meeting. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.